We added articles one through five that we, in those sections that needed additional discussion and then also went through and added the rest of the articles and items that needed to be discussed. We thought we could go through those one by one. Getting as far as we can tonight and then identify, once we get through the entire list, we'll identify those items that we want to highlight during the public hearing and have further discussion during the public hearing where we can take a public comment on those items and hopefully get to a point where we can have something we can approve and forward on to the town board trustees. So that was the plan for tonight unless the planning commission would like to see another thing.
So we want to start by going through the articles one through five items?
Sure.
Is that, that's the way you've got it anyway?
That sounds good.
Okay. I guess, I guess for everyone's benefit too.
Yeah.
We went through items, the reason that we're revisiting items one through five or articles one through five is because that was, we sort of under changed our process.
We did change our process, yeah. We started, that, those were of course the first articles we started with, then we had a couple month delay in continuing the process as we tried to figure out how we were going to handle the process so, and then we, like you said, we changed the process so we want to go back and make sure that we look at those articles again because it's been some time and we can add anything to the list that staff may have missed and then, yeah, move forward from there.
Matt, do you recall what?
Yeah.
What point we had the attorney present?
It was one through five.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's, yeah. And that's when the process changed, of course.
Okay.
So we want to go through these items one at a time, you think? Is that?
Well.
I mean, we've been through it once.
We have. I guess, you know, maybe I suggest that we, we have the list in front of us, we can go through it one by one, or we can just address those items that maybe we might be able to pull off the list or.
Did you, did you identify potential items or specifically?
These are all, that we might be able to pull off the list? No, we didn't.
Okay, so.
But we could, you know, the first one, Article One, we can start there, is, is one item that I think we could probably possibly take off the list.
Because it's been moved to Article, Article Eight, or Article Thirteen.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's not in the definition section anymore, but it's still within the code in chapter sixteen, just in a different location.
Matt, I was confused on this cover memo where it says, "Also attached to the town attorney's written responses."
Oh, did that get left in there?
Did it get left in there? Yeah, and I couldn't find anything, so I was kind of going.
Well, yeah, we, I apologize for that. That was not supposed to be in the cover memo.
Ah.
We, that was a plan.
That's the wrong one, Rochelle, that's not the one you got in email. That's the wrong one, I printed it out.
I think it, no, I think it said that in the email too. I think I remember in the email I was saying, "Well, I'm not seeing any responses."
Yeah, I printed it off the email and it says, "Also attached to the town's attorney's written responses to the questions."
Okay, I'm sorry, that's my fault.
Kendra Carberry was going to be here tonight to talk, she has done those, but she had death in the family and she couldn't be here tonight, so we decided to pull that item until the next meeting.
Okay.
So I'm sorry for that.
Okay, so my confusion wasn't just my own.
You're not crazy.
And I didn't want to give them to you ahead of time, knowing she wasn't going to be here, so.
Yeah.
I apologize for that.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay, so Article One, number one, major public improvement definition taken, it was removed because the item is now included in Article Thirteen, but should it still be included in the definitions, I guess is the question.
I don't think you need it in both places.
Right.
Remind me again about Article Thirteen then, is that?
Deals with public improvements.
Just to public improvements, okay. All right, okay. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and I think there's several items in this list that kind of fall into that category of, that were just cleanup items.
Well, I thought maybe we could just run through them quickly and maybe we can.
Yeah, I think a sanity check is, is good on this, yeah.
Okay, so Article, will we wait for Matt to come back or?
Well.
Do we need to?
He is dead on the thing.
Oh, he's got a little computer problem? Okay?
On Article Two, basically this deals with the chart and that's why there's so many items in there because we went through the chart. We sort of, well, we went through the chart and we had a bunch of questions, so, I mean, this is something that we could spend, you know, some, some time on.
Sure.
And we could knock off, you know, we could say, "Well, you know what? We're comfortable with this change if we went through it."
Well.
We would have to do that anyway.
Once we get, once we get into Article Three too, I mean, there may be some of those items that are removed, some respects material changes to the code that, from a process and procedure standpoint that we may want to address in a public hearing format, right?
Right.
So, you know, the fact that it's on the list is still, it should remain on the list or?
Yeah, I mean, we pulled it because we felt there was enough taking place with that change, either omitting, you know, pulling it out altogether or changing some of the parameters of it, that we said, "Now, wait, that's kind of falling outside the scope of what we felt bringing the code from 300 pages to 200 pages was about, that, that piece is primarily the, the reorganization, removing redundancies, but, but not getting to the, to some of the specifics that really should be part of a public discussion."
As Cliff pointed out the last meeting, some of the, the items that are on the list, we just pulled so we could discuss them farther. I mean, they weren't all pulled because we felt, I don't think, I didn't recall everything being on the list, something that had to go to.
Right.
There were a lot, so I think it, we definitely need to go through it, but I think there were some items that we just wanted to revisit or discuss.
Or needed further clarification.
Or we needed further clarification.
Right, so I would say under Article Two, the sketch plat preview is removed from the chart. Sketch plat is normally required, may or may not be appropriate, but I think we, that's something we would like to discuss under the format of a public hearing, right?
Right.
Conditional use permit, the call up at the board level was removed, so the decision is at the planning commission level. You know, same thing, maybe? I don't know. I have a feeling, an opinion about that.
That's probably one of the few places where we actually do make a decision.
Right, right. That was fine, leave that one in.
Yeah, exactly. Leave that one in, uncontested.
You're making, yeah, exactly, you're making a decision right on, on that one at, at the planning commission level, so.
Yeah, I actually, I'm not so sure I wouldn't just pull that out and say it's fine, but even the first one, I mean, even the first one, I'd be fine pulling off the list, but.
I mean, I guess the point, it's a, that's a procedural change and if the public has comment about that procedural change, being that it, being that the decision was made at the planning commission level as opposed to the board level, if the, you know, I, I don't know if that should be involved, should be something we should consider in the public hearing?
So let me be the ignorant one to throw out the question. Tell me more about what a sketch plat is and by bypassing that step, is, is the public going to be missing something along the way, you know, toward a final approval or, you know?
No, I was, I was leaving that one in.
Yeah.
One point one, I was, I was on to one point two already, so.
Oh, I'm so slow.
It's all right, but, no, I, I still think we should, we should go through that chart and discuss that in the public hearing format. I was just talking about the conditional use permit.
Okay, yeah.
So, again, it's a procedural change.
Yeah.
I, I think we're fine with it, but, at least I am, but I don't, I'm not going to speak for everyone, but it's all going to ultimately get reviewed in the public, I mean, it all comes before the, in the public hearing anyway, it's just whether it's one of those specific items we want to call up and specifically make mention.
Well, let me ask, tell you, like, for instance, the first one, the sketch plat review is removed from the chart. Well, in the chart with the original code, it's the decision of planning commission, public wouldn't see it anyway. So what is removed from the chart is that basically it's all administrative, that we don't really do a sketch plat anymore. We have them come in, we do a pre-application and then they move to their preliminary plat if it's a major subdivision. Public isn't involved at all.
And we removed the sketch plat, but we, you know, we added the concept plat.
Right.
Which is at the very beginning and they typically, developers are going to provide somewhat of a sketch plat.
We're, we're still going to see it in a preliminary plat format anyway, right? In turn, in front of a public hearing?
Yeah.
In the case of a PED or PD.
So what would a sketch plat have looked like for, example?
Guardian?
For staff, for staff decision?
No, because we kind of saw guardian for.
Ochsner?
Yeah, Ochsner, because there, all we had were rough dimensions that they were going to try to, you know, that they wanted setbacks to be this and there was going to be lot coverage of that, but we never actually saw other than what would be flashed up on the screen.
I don't think it would have been, Fred can answer this, but I'm not sure if it had been materially different. It's really the layout of the lots themselves, you're so good about the lot.
Okay, if it was really just.
The property into, into individual parcels.
So that's what a sketch.
Right, that's what the sketch plat would have been as well, right? Just a, just a.
Just a plan view, here are lot lines?
Yeah.
Yep, lot lines.
Not, not, here's what structures look like within the lot lines.
No, no. It's more of a rough sketch.
Okay.
So just lot lines. A rough sketch and under the old code, under the decision at the staff, well, what we would do is just talk about that, talk a little bit with them in terms of their initial design. It really doesn't have anything, it's more of a technical issue than anything else.
Yeah, and it's really, well, now we've got a concept plan, they're going to provide that.
More.
You sent, it's a little bit more than that, right?
Yeah, typically you see elevations.
Right.
Site plan.
Okay.
Then the plat becomes an afterthought almost when you're in that deal.
Well, the change in the code is not that the sketch plat is no longer required, that's not being changed, that, that's, that's not happening in here, is it?
Yeah, it's not being required.
So, so the sketch plat not being required is being pulled out of the code.
Right.
Currently, okay. So it's not just removing it from the chart, it's also taking it out of process.
Might be almost being replaced by the concept plan, just a different definition of a product, right? Is that a good way to put it?
That probably ought to just be left on as being pointed out, I mean, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's, I think that's fine.
It's easily explained if anybody has a question.
Yeah, I think we, we'd still choose to leave it on.
Mm-hmm.
Conditional use permit.
I'm sure you don't want to go back and do one more and one more time.
No, let's just talk about it. I'm itching to move to one point two. Feeling opinions about one point two?
So again, is this a change or is it currently that we have, I mean, currently it's at the planning commission level?
That's the board level.
No, yeah, yeah, the decision, but we have the call up provision. So basically what you're saying, we're getting rid of the call up provision.
The call up provision, I guess.
Do we think the board is really going to go for that?
Did we decide to do that? Did we want to have that?
No, so, staff is recommending get rid of the call up provision because it just doesn't work like it was.
Intended.
Intended to work, exactly. And a good example of that is the, the fire department came through last meeting at the board level and it was on the consent agenda and it was called up and so we had to schedule a public hearing, so now it's pushed out a whole month to March eight. And they're itching to get their construction documents out, to bid and, and it's just a, you know, if we could just schedule, either have a decision in the planning commission or just schedule the public hearing at the board level, you know.
I'd say keep it, keep it on here because it needs to be on here, but I'm okay with that.
It's process improvement.
It sounds like it streamlines it and it's just a condition, a conditional use permit, right, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm okay taking it off, but.
Just, oh, taking it off entirely?
Yeah.
You mean taking it out, you mean like?
Basically eliminating it so it's not, it's not one of those items for possible future consideration. It's just going to be one of the changes that will be in the land use code, it's still going to be part of, we're just not going to make special mention of it and have further discussion on it. But, and you're still going to vote on it, it's still something you want to talk about later, you could, it could be brought up during the planning commission or the public hearing process, but.
So I think my, my, my concern and my interest in this list was any substantive changes that were made, so that is, other than contextual changes or.
Rearranging stuff.
Things, rearranging.
This is substantive.
To me, it feels like the public ought to be made aware of it, that's, that's my feeling.
You know, we could leave everything on the list and just highlight those items that we specifically want to discuss.
For action code.
At the public hearing.
Well, they're not necessarily for.
Whether they're bold or.
They're not really for future consideration, I mean, at that point, there's, I mean, it's more to just, like you said, highlight them so, so that the public knows the changes that have been, that are, that may affect them.
Mm-hmm.
And this, we think is a good change that affects them, there are at least one point two. That would help speed up the process a bit.
Developing an action code column maybe?
I don't know if we call the list something different, yeah, but.
Well, I guess one of the items that's interesting in this whole process is that we're changing some of the responsibilities from the planning commission to the board or vice versa, and it'd be interesting to have the board's opinion of some of these, you know, if we knew that the board didn't care about a conditional use permit, fine, make it at the planning commission level, we don't care, and it wouldn't even necessarily, you know, it could still be on, on the, on the agenda discussed, but. And like, I was looking at the major subdivision, the next one, one point three.
I care about that change.
Of course, but since the decision was changed from re, to review and comment and call up at the board level, it was changed to decision. Does the board care? Does the board, I mean, today's board, I don't know if, you know, your board's past or board's future, if they care or not, but.
Yeah, yeah, like Fred just mentioned, that I think it's important for the planning commission to go ahead and, as, make their decision as, on what they would like to see in the land use code and then the board can react to it.
Yeah, okay, all right. That's fair.
So, so I think we have two things. I think we have items for possible future considerations that we're sitting here discussing that we decide are going to go in or out of the code or, and that there are some things there's in other lists that we keep so that when this thing does go to the board and up to public hearing, that any substantive changes are made clear. People don't have to dig through and compare one document to the other to try to figure out what was changed and, and so, I mean, I think both, if we can clearly just.
Clearly, my, I guess, we decided one point two is substantive, we ought to leave it in, one point three is substantive, we ought to leave it in. One point four, major subdivision, final plat, decision at the planning commission level was changed to review and comment and call up at the board level was changed to decision with no public hearing.
But did we decide on one point three? Do we, are we okay with that?
Mm-hmm. I, I just think it should stay.
Should stay.
Stay on the list, because we're going to discuss it, we're going to discuss our opinion of it at, in a, at a public hearing format.
We could indicate after each item, the ones you say leave on, we could, you know, like you mentioned, an action column.
That's what I was, an action code.
Like for the Article One, number one, we could put support.
Mm-hmm.
And then for the, you know, the next one point one, one point two, you have to leave.
Well, but are we, are we voicing our opinion about it today or are we just saying, "No, we should be talking about it in the public hearing"?
Right, that's where I was confused, but I like the idea of it being at a planning commission public hearing later.
Yes.
And let us decide and hear from the public if they care and either leave it on the list, put it off the list.
Wasn't, wasn't that a distinction you were making there?
It is, but I think it would be a good idea to put a support or not, it just speeds, the, the whole idea is let's speed the public hearing process along, because I think there's a lot of discussion that we can have here and then present the list and our position.
But I would, I guess I'm saying that some, in some cases, that discussion should occur in the format of a public hearing, as opposed to us having a, having a support or, you know, a kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down type of discussion in a work session when there's virtually no public here.
Or, you know, we could, whatever, you know, terms we want to use, we could say discuss or no discussion after each one, or, I'm just trying to think of ways that, leave them on the list, but yet indicate, you know.
Okay, well, I mean, if you're.
Keep it on, but we just, the information, you know, that's what you're talking about, support.
I mean, if, if, I, I don't, I'm not sure whether to make that distinction because I would say, going back to the beginning of the list, one point one, I would say, probably say no discussion really. But it's still.
But someone would still have the right to, yeah, be able to see that and say, "You know, I have my own thoughts about that."
Uh-huh.
And they may bring us a perspective that we don't, we weren't considering, so I think that's why you keep it in there. Chances are, no one will get up and comment on one point one.
And, or one point two, maybe for that matter.
Possibly, yep.
I don't feel strongly enough, I don't think, to spend a lot of time on either of those two issues necessarily, but somebody might.
Well, I want to retract, kind of what I was saying earlier, I, the idea of what substantive or not isn't applicable yet, I don't think, I don't think it's applicable until we finalize this list, have our public hearing, have our discussion, comes on or off, until it's on, until it's in or out, there's no point in saying it's a substantive change because it might not be, because we have had our next public hearing, we may take it off the list and, or say change it to something else, in which case that's what ends up on the list, so I'd be, be fine with going through here, deciding whether it's an item we do want to further discuss or whether we're just okay with it. And I think if we're okay with it, we can mark it, we are okay, there's going to be more discussion so that, not, and, at the public hearing, still go through the list just knowing that we're not, we're not intending to have any discussion on it, we think we can just move right through it, but certainly give the public an opportunity to speak up if they want.
So it's not coming off the list, per se?
Right, because we know we're not going to have any, we're just kind of okay with how it is.
So based on that criteria, I would throw out there that one point one, we would have no discussion. One point two, we have no discussion. One point three, we would have a discussion.
Yeah.
One point four, we would surely have discussion, going to final plat, right?
Correct.
Maybe one point three we might not, but one point four definitely, right?
Well, but when I, when I've seen what becomes preliminary, I mean, what we went through recently with, with Ochsner, there was a lot that was in the preliminary that I can tell you this, the town board was even caught by surprise that, yes, that night, they were deciding on roof heights and they didn't know it, and it's like, but yes, you are. So that tells me there's a whole lot that runs into that preliminary that absolutely is under scrutiny at the planning level, at planning commission level, and this kind of a change, I think, affects our role.
Sure.
Significantly.
No, that's why I still think.
So I think.
One point three, there would be discussion.
Absolutely, preliminary sets a lot of things in motion that only then finally come to be in the final.
Uh-huh, right.
So they, the two go hand in hand, from what I've seen, the preliminary lays out so much that then supposedly that's it, you can't change it. And frankly, I, I think we spend more time on these things.
John, if you want to keep writing it down the list.
Yeah.
Go through this if any one of us has a.
Minor, so.
Speak up.
I would say discussion on one point three, one point four, minor, one point five, minor subdivision, pre-application, decision at the staff level was changed to review and comment and call up at the planning commission level was deleted.
Since it's pre-application, I think.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I'm not having any problem with that.
Yeah.
Especially on a minor subdivision.
Right, because then you go down to the minor subdivision final plat.
Final plat, and the decision's coming to the planning commission.
Yeah, so I think.
That's just a, what is minor, is it five? Is it less than five?
Less than.
Uh, minor?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's less than six lines.
Less than six.
Right.
But interestingly, if you look at one five and one six together, it takes the planning commission out of one five and then it changes, it, it basically downgrades.
The planning commission?
The planning commission in one six.
Well, I think one six is like one.
One three and one four, yeah.
So, I mean, I, and I.
They're together.
I think we're just, um, discussing.
Discussing one five and one six, okay.
One, one six, one five, I'm okay with that.
One switch is.
Staff to one five.
But the discussion of one point six might fall back into the discussion of one point five.
It might be.
Yeah.
We'll discuss.
Because I think if you view those together, it's, it's together what's, what's going on now with the planning commission role across a minor subdivision process and there are two significant, there are two changes and one may be insignificant, but the other is not, so.
Site development plan, one point seven, site development plan, pre-application, decision at the staff level was changed to review and comment.
That's all they need.
Site development plan, we don't do a lot of them anyway, do we?
Not pre-application.
Pre-application.
Not pre-application, no. There's no discussion.
Site development plan, for instance, like the Rogers property, they, if they ever, it's zoned, so if they ever wanted to come forward with some type of development other than what's plotted now, they would need to do the site development plan.
Right.
And.
But at this point, it's only saying staff is going to review and comment.
Right.
It'll get referred to the planning commission anyway, right?
I mean, the planning commission, I mean, the pre-application meeting is just a very initial meeting with staff.
Standard procedure anyway, right?
They're just trying to figure out if they've got a project they could do or not, so.
Right.
Go back, I'm sorry, to Article One, number one, that might be one that we want to have further discussion because of the who reviews major public improvements. So I.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I think we want to leave that as a further discussion.
It's a world discussion.
Well, I thought we were.
Yeah, I thought we raised that as a key issue somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely.
I thought we were just talking about the definition piece here, that it was removed from the, but, but to your point, major, the major public improvement is definitely something we want to discuss.
That's one point one nine. He's never gotten to it. It's on the next page.
So one point seven, fine, one point eight, site development plan, decision at the planning level, commission level was changed to review and comment and call up at the board level was changed to decision.
So that's discussed, I mean, that falls in one form.
Yep. One point nine, site specific development plan, decision at the planning commission level was changed to review and comment and call up at the board level was changed to decision. Same, yeah.
We'll discuss.
One point ten, site development plan, minor amendment, call up at the board level was deleted. So it's, does that mean it's a decision at the planning commission level?
Right.
So at the planning commission.
Site development plan, minor.
Minor amendment.
So remind me again, what was the impetus or who changed all these?
These are recommendations from staff.
Staff or the attorney, right?
Staff and the attorney, correct.
Okay.
Based on the way things.
Should work. Should work.
Currently work and we think would work better.
It tells me that the staff and the attorney are saying, you know, planning commission is a nice place to review some things, but their vote isn't really going to carry much weight, and that's what I'm hearing.
Think about the process now.
Yeah.
You made a decision for the fire station, and it went to the board, and they pulled it off anyway.
Right.
I mean-
But they may pull it off because it gives more opportunity for public comment before they make-
Well, the only reason they typically pull an item off the consent agenda is because they want to make changes.
Okay.
There's somebody at the podium screaming, "No!"
Well, yeah, exactly, well, which is, again, part of the process to allow more public input so that another round of, you know, voice can be heard, sure.
But isn't that what this forum here is for? I mean, I think that's their point, is that you can drag out this process so long that it discourages development to a point. I mean, if somebody's under a tight timeframe, they may not be able to wait another month. It may have a material impact on their project to, it's like, oh, wow, okay, here's another month that we can't do anything, or we don't know anything.
Material impact on the neighborhood that sits next to it.
But for a conditional use permit, that's insane.
Right.
But for a site development plan, sure, I agree, but we're not changing, we're not, we're talking about, I mean, these ones we're discussing, I suspect. It's going from planning commission, planning commission having just review and comment, and the call up at the board to be a decision, or being call up, being changed to a decision. I suspect we'll go back to what I think we had before, which was a, an approval by the planning commission, subject to call up by the board. I mean, I mean, we're talking about a site development plan.
What he's saying, though, I think is that it's not working that way, that, that-
So it's making it longer.
Instead of defining the process more clearly, what's happening now is exactly what's going on with the fire station, which was, they thought they had a decision from the planning commission, but in fact, the board can still call it up, and they did choose to do that, which delayed the development process by a month.
But we're suggesting to change that for the conditional use permit, so that the board can't do that.
Right.
Right.
On a conditional use permit, correct.
On a conditional use permit, yes, and-
But I don't think we ought to, I mean, it's not going to be that extreme on a site development plan. They're going to, I mean, that's got to go to the public, I mean, that's got to go to a board meeting. I mean, the public has to be able to comment. But these recommendations, I mean, here, I mean, even if we change this to, I mean, right now, it says, "Call up at the board level was changed to a decision" with no public hearing. I mean, yeah, I would agree, that's, that actually is not a good idea, I don't think. I mean, having a decision by the planning commission that can go on the consent agenda, that could be called up by the board, is probably a better way to handle, I mean, a major subdivision plan. Not just, we're not here to discuss it right now, but-
Yeah, I mean, I think if the board, it's something for discussion, but I think if the board is going to call something up, if they're going to review something, then it should be in the form of a public hearing.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, the way we're looking at it-
But we can, we can talk about that as we, we get to that point.
Right. And for 1.10, that's a, the way it would be now is it would be decision at staff. If we, because right now, the way as it goes-
Oh, site development plan, minor amendment, would just be a staff decision?
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure I disagree with that.
Yeah, so it's a notice.
And minor being no more than 10% change, or something?
Right, yeah, and we have to, that's something we'll discuss further.
We got into that one, yes, that one, the wording, the wording was very strange, and it turned out you could change like 90% and call it a 10% change, I mean, it was, the wording was really-
And we'll get into that one later.
Yeah, that one was, was bad wording around that one. So minor's got to be truly minor, is what it comes down to.
Right. 1.11, site development plan, major amendment, decision at the planning commission level was changed to review and comment, and call up at the board level was changed to decision. Same thing.
In other words, everything that deals with the site plan, whether it's a final development plan, I've got a straight zone over here, a B-zone, and I have a site plan, because I'm building a commercial building, a major amendment, all of those are changed from, at the site plan level, of having to be approved at the board of trustees.
Right. You're, you're just making a consensus bet.
From maybe being approved, maybe doing, it's changing from the call up, which was, maybe the board calls it up, and maybe it doesn't. In other words, then the decision of the planning commission stands, or it may stand anyway, even if they do call it up, to a definite statement that says it has to be at the board level for a decision.
In this case, when you say that the board level decision was changed, or changed to decision, does that, does that imply that it will always be a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. So in the case of a developer coming forth, they know that at the end of the day, their final decision's going to come before a public hearing in front of the board of trustees, right?
Right.
That's essentially what-
It gives them some certainty that that's, that night, whether yea or nay, they're getting a decision that night, yeah.
Okay.
And their first level of scrutiny, though, is at the planning commission, which renders your recommendation.
Right, understood.
You render a recommendation. So no discussion.
Yeah, well, we can discuss, these are, you know-
They're all tied together, yeah.
FDP, 1.12, decision at the planning commission level was changed to review and comment, and call up at the board level was changed to decision. Same thing. FDP, plan minor amendment, call up at the board level is deleted.
For a minor. So staff can make-
That's a decision to staff.
Right. Yep, understood.
It's supposed to be discussed.
Yep, 1.14, final development plan, major amendment, same thing. Decision at the planning commission level was changed to review and comment, and call up at the board level was changed to decision. PD, same thing. 1.15, we'll review and comment, and the decision at the board level. 1.16, lot line adjustments and subdivision exemptions were added to the chart, and have a decision at the staff level.
That should be discussed.
Just an example of a subdivision exemption.
Well, if it's ordered by the court, there's a property dispute, and the court renders a decision, and it goes to court, court renders a decision that the lot line has to be changed.
So the decision, in that, in that case, is just a staff-
Fairly, fairly narrow group of examples that that can happen.
I would say, I wouldn't really comment on that, I spent a lot of time on that personally, but want to put that on the no comment category, you think?
No discussion, yeah.
1.17, for street vacations, staff recommends the, adding the word alley. I would say no discussion. Trailer hookup was deleted from the chart. We have, because we don't have any zoning for trailers now, is that?
No, they're all on a foundation.
Right, although-
They're not anymore, you can't have a single white, I don't believe, right?
No, yeah.
It has to be a double white on the foundation.
The way I look currently, yeah, and we don't, this may, you know, I've heard from some residents in original town who disagree with this.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's some of this going on. I know one, for sure.
I do, too.
Kind of, it comes and goes. He comes, he comes and goes.
Yeah.
You know, not, I mean, we wouldn't be impacting people who, you know.
They have a use by right.
Sure.
You should bring their trailer.
I didn't know there weren't a lot of chickens either, so, you know.
Well, I would say no comment. It doesn't mean that someone from the planning, or from the public won't have comment, but I don't have any comment about that. Major public improvement, review and comment at the planning commission level was deleted. Yes, this is an important issue for the planning commission.
Yes.
And what we think is major and what you think are major may be two very different things.
Yeah, the definition's going to be key.
I think a roundabout is major.
Some might say an electronic sign.
Yes, that could be, yes.
I'm glad you weren't paying attention.
I was, I was like, the future, think about definitions.
Yep, yep.
Minor public improvement, call up at the board level is deleted.
So that's a staff decision.
Staff decision for a minor public improvement?
I'd like to leave it up for discussion, because I think we need to clarify what we have.
What a major and minor is, yeah, I agree.
Major and minor.
Historic designation called by the board was changed to a decision.
I have a question on that one. In the code, section, it's on page 199, it says, "The planning commission is hereby designated as a historic designation commission." And you want to change that to the board, was that?
Well, um-
Are we the historic designated commission, really?
Yeah.
Really?
Well, that one, then, I would think we would just leave it, decision of the planning commission.
Yeah, I mean, we went through this, you know, quite a long time, the board really didn't want to do it, they didn't want the historic commission to do it, but they wanted the planning commission to do that. So if somebody in an original town had a piece of property they wanted to designate as historic, the planning commission would then determine if that was to be designated as historic, where they couldn't do any change to it, couldn't put siding on it, couldn't change the windows. All that, is that right?
Right. And so while you're, so, I mean, right now, it says, "Review and call up by the staff," or "Review and comment by the staff," "Review and comment by the planning commission," and "Call up by the board of trustees." Doesn't really follow the language.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
So one place it says it's the planning commission, and here it says it's a decision by the board, so we changed one or the other of it.
Right, and then we had that long discussion about, it should be at the planning commission, because the board didn't want to do it. So the chart needs to follow that-
That section.
That, that sort of process, so it would be decision at the planning commission and nothing in the box for the board.
The order.
Is that something you want to discuss, then?
Mm-hmm. Don't you think?
Yep.
Yeah, I think so.
Or not, the reason to know what we're-
You have to know what the heck's going on. 1.22, appeal of the planning commission and appeal of administrative decision were combined into a general appeal category with review and comment at the staff level and decision at the board level. It seems like the appropriate review process, I mean, stat, the, the board's going to count on a review and comment from the staff, anyway. And really, they're the final arbiters of something, right, anyway, in town, right, the board, so. But it's, I'm not sure I'd really discuss that too much, but it doesn't mean other people won't. Logically, it just seems like the right.
Right. And a public discussion.
And so is this an opportunity, if a decision is made at the planning commission level that, or an approval, I mean, even, for example, the, the conditional use permit, let's say it can't be called up, but is this appeal process could be used?
Under the conditional use, you could appeal to the board.
You could appeal to the board.
They could appeal through the appeals process in the code.
Where, okay.
They would appeal through the appeals process in the code.
Okay, and how, and how is that done? Is that a, coming to staff and saying they want to appeal a decision?
That, don't we have a section of the code on appeals? I thought we did. I don't know.
It's a formal, it's 16 to 100, so.
In the current code, or the new?
No, it was-
The new?
New one. 16 to 100, they were-
16 to 100.
Same, same chapter goes down farther.
Oh, okay, there it is.
16 dash 2 dash 100.
So it's a little more complicated. So we want to have a discussion on this? In other words, you appeal it, you appeal for some, a decision by the planning commission, you appeal to the board of trustees. If you appeal a decision of, by the manager, and let's say it's a zoning decision they made, that you have to go to the board of adjustment. So let's say it's a zoning violation that you've been tagged with, and you can appeal that.
But that's where there's an alleged error, not just because they aren't happy.
Well, in the resulting requirement, decision, or approval determination.
I'm sorry, say that again, Fred.
Well, it says, where there is an alleged error in the resulting requirement, or their decision, or their approval determination, so there's a number of things there where they can, where a person can appeal.
But not only an alleged error.
Well, but as team, this is the alleged area, in other words, well, it's, yeah, you would say, I think you've made the wrong decision because X, Y, Z, and appeal it.
Okay. I don't have any need to discuss it, I was more interested in the ability for a final decision to be appealed, if there's really a problem with it. I'm okay with it.
Okay. I would, so I, is consensus then to, kind of, no comment?
Yeah, I guess.
What's that?
No discussion.
No discussion on that one?
Yeah.
Were combined into a general appeal category with review and comment at the staff level, what if the, what if there's a, and I haven't read this all the way through, but what if, well, I mean, what if the issue is with the staff or the manager?
Well, they're still-
Do they still?
I mean, staff is going to provide a report to the board anyways, so.
Yeah, that's true.
It might as well be in the code, and then they can, and the, the board can determine it on its merits.
And it says that the, in section C, that it's filed with the town clerk, and then she forwards it to the board of adjustments, so.
Okay.
Watch out for the town clerk, too.
I don't know if we've ever had appeal, have we? Formal appeal?
Okay.
I'll have to order down with this, I'm sure.
So Article, that's, that's it through Article 5, right?
Oh, 6.
And where, the next one is Article 6, which we've-
In other words, the rest of the items, like in Article 3, Article 4, and Article 5, you're right, we just roll right over.
Mm-hmm. So, and these other ones were things we specifically pulled, but we should, we need to continue, I think, to go through them, right?
Unless you want to go through those chapters, again, we didn't write up, we didn't redo that, like, say, well, this has been changed, or that came from old-
From, from 3, 4, and 5?
Yeah.
Well, we went through the same process on 1 through 5, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah.
They're just not on this list.
Right, because it wasn't anything that we pulled.
No, it wasn't anything that we pulled there.
Right.
From our notes.
As I recall, it wasn't, there wasn't anything that was so dramatic that we-
Right.
We felt there was, there was a need. I don't remember exactly everything that was in there, but-
Mm-hmm.
Well, Article 3 is non-conforming law situations, non-conforming lots, Article 4 is enforcement, and then Article 5's annexations, which the attorneys pretty much took most of the language out of the annexations, because it's under state statutes.
Right.
That's, we, that's statutory, so.
Right, and then the enforcement one, I mean, that, the attorneys cleaned it up, I mean, that's the great, they're bailiwick, anyway.
Under enforcement, you mean?
Enforcement, yeah. So we didn't even deal with it, I mean, we didn't talk about it any greatly at all. We let them have their language to their will.
So on to Article 6. Schedule of uses, residential use of recreational RVs, use of living quarters in R- dash MH was changed from a permitted use to a prohibited use. It was felt that this was not an appropriate use in a residential zone. I would say we have no, no con-
No discussion on that?
Mm-hmm. That's what I'm asking.
But it was a change to note.
You said there would be or would not be? Right, that's my, my opinion, too. It's a change, but no discussion.
We don't want to discuss.
But, yeah, not looking to discuss it, but it is a change to note.
Schedule of uses, residential use of pet temporary care facility has been added to the list and is prohibited in all residential district, same thing. But I'm sure there may be people that will want to comment, but we don't, at the moment. I just got, schedule of uses, commercial, the use of fast food and drive-in restaurants for the B.C. district has been changed from special use to prohibited. It's felt that community business is more small, office retail has smaller impacts on the community.
It's just on, because it was a-
Same thing, right?
Right, that I disagree with.
Okay.
I think special use means special use, and I think you should have the opportunity to review it, rather than just prohibiting it.
Well, it's changed the D in the, we can-
What's B, B.C. again?
Business, community, community business.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I think if any planning commission member wants to discuss it, we need to, we'll talk about it.
We'll discuss it.
I mean, that may have even, I mean, could that have prohibited the drive-through at Starbucks up on Colton, for example?
Exactly.
Well, Starbucks is fast food, but-
But there's a drive-through on the other building, too.
It would prevent McDonald's from putting a, putting a thing right here on the corner across from Conoco, for example.
Right.
Because that's a B.C., is that B, that's B.C.?
Right, right.
Okay. Schedule of uses, industrial use, the use of sexually oriented businesses was changed from special use to prohibited in the I.L. district. I know that there's going to, I'm sure there's going to be, well, I shouldn't say that, I'm sure.
I mean, you have people who currently have the right, use by right now, and I don't even know if we can legally take it away.
Where would that, we have to have a place for it, don't we?
Right.
You have to play, you have to have, allow it in one zone district, but if you have a zone district that doesn't actually, you put it in the zone district, but in this case it doesn't, there none of them exist, which would, this would be in the I.A. district. There is no such district as it exists. It's in the code, but it doesn't exist in.
I thought we had an I.L., but no I.A.
We do have.
Right, which is why they're showing it as prohibited. So somebody has a use by right today.
Yes.
Right?
Fortunately, it's right across the street.
And I assume that.
Have the right.
We talked about the same, using, utilizing B.C., the same codes for medical marijuana facility, and probably, this, all this was drafted or, and even discussed before really this became an issue in town, which has sort of come in the last 60 days or 90 days or something. So, we, that will be addressed at some point, right?
Right, yeah.
But the town is studying that, the attorneys are studying that whole issue and trying to see what, how things kind of play out in the statutes and all that, right?
And we might.
We don't have to, do we want to address it?
Yeah, we might be able to incorporate that into this review process if we wanted to.
I think.
Unless you want to keep it completely separate.
I just don't, I just don't know if there's enough, is there enough information even to render?
But we don't know what the legislature's going to do. In the end, they're not going to touch local zoning anyway to any great degree. They made it, you know, so this whole thing is going to be interesting. It needs to play itself out, in my view, because then the communities will know what they're left with, which is probably pretty much what you have now, anyway.
Because the attorneys come to meeting every week with a different opinion on the subject because of what's going on in state legislation, so.
I wouldn't bother with it. I'd let it play itself out.
Right, okay.
That's the bulk of it.
Yeah, so, I mean, I agree. I don't know that we should even bother to tackle it at this point, it just.
You're talking about medical marijuana.
Yeah.
And getting back to sexually oriented businesses, can, are we, I mean, is it legal to make a change to the existing land use code?
Yep.
And prevent somebody who has that use by right now? Can we take that use away?
It's not a use by right, it's a special use permit.
So it's a special use permit in I.L.?
Yeah.
Now, it's not a use by right?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, so if it's a special use, we can change it to prohibited.
Right.
And that's all this is, okay, and that's what this is.
Well, even if it was, happened to be a use by right, you could change it.
You can, okay.
Sure.
Just somebody could be grandfathered in if they already had an existing business.
But they don't legally have to be? That's always my question. We're not required to do that. We can just take it away?
Sure. But you have to have a spot for it somewhere else.
Somewhere else, right.
Because if you don't have that land, can you, can someone?
They can try and rezoning.
Try to get I.A.
They have to try a rezoning to I.A.
But if they have the use, if they are using the use, if the use is in place, then even though you change it, you can't legally take that.
Correct.
Use away from them. But if they're not using the use, then.
Right, yeah.
Okay, then I have no need for discussion on this.
Just for my own information, businesses that would fall under that category would include it, like an adult bookstore or something, a strip club.
When you're getting into a bar or liquor license, then that's different, right? But an adult bookstore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just think when you're getting into a restaurant or a bar, there are other use requirements, right, besides sexually oriented permission?
Okay, okay.
We didn't want to discuss.
Yeah, I think we should discuss it.
Okay, I don't have a need to, but.
You already have.
I'm fine with it.
You have your opinion.
I think it's a good thing. Well, the fact that it's special use prohibited, to me, is slightly different than a use now being prohibited. I didn't catch that it was special use, but we can leave it to be discussed, either way.
Schedule of Requirements, Residential Districts. The maximum building height in our district was changed from 32 to 35 feet. It was felt that 35 is a reasonable height. We've addressed this already.
This is done.
This is done, isn't it?
No, that's, that's.
Well, we met that, we wrote the current code to meet this code, to meet the revised code, didn't we?
No, we did not on this one.
We didn't do that.
No, 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 no.
Oh, that was lot coverage, you're right.
Yeah, no, we did not.
We did not change.
We did not address height. That is a separate discussion.
Oh, we only talked about lot coverage. We didn't talk about height?
No.
Nope.
Well, we might have talked.
That was part of that one.
It never got done.
No, I recall that.
It was lot coverage and he had another request in there.
And we didn't.
Well, it was setbacks. It was setbacks, yeah. Aside versus, yeah.
Definitely want to discuss that.
So can I, and I've had this on my mind, I don't know if it's in here or not, was there's a, well, never mind, oh, that's a separate request.
Why is it?
It was about two-story garages being built. We prevent separate two-story garages from being built.
Oh, so you couldn't have a carriage house above or something?
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we can build new homes with garages with rooms above connected, but if they're disconnected, you're not allowed to have, it's detached. You're not allowed two-story, but if it's attached, you are.
Where is that? I missed that.
I read it somewhere in here. It's been on my mind, but I think that's a, I think that's a my request or somebody else's to bring to the planning commission. I don't know. Makes it into the.
I would definitely write yourself a note on it to let it go by. It's something worth discussing. I mean, the idea of people working and living, you know, having a home-based business and being able to work, it's a very sustainable thing.
It is. That's one of our interests.
Absolutely.
So, okay. Six, Schedule of Requirements, Residential Districts. The requirement for maximum number of stories was deleted. This was deleted for all districts in the Schedule of Requirements. This is covered by the maximum building height. Right?
No need to.
No discussion, right?
No discussion. Schedule of Requirements, Residential Districts. The maximum lot coverage, this was addressed already, right? We've already.
Thus en bold, it says this has been adopted.
Well, it's adopted in the current code. It hasn't been adopted in this code, but it's written in this code to match what we've done now, right? So let's say no discussion.
So we can change it back.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
Let's change our mind.
Back to 30.
Let's make it more liberal.
What a tangled web we're in.
Number eight, accessory uses. The reference to home occupation was deleted because a home occupation must be in the primary residence.
So this kind of.
Yeah.
This gets back to what I think Bob was talking about.
Right, yep.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you want to discuss it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number nine, home occupation. Of this current code, were combined under section nine of revised code, and notice maybe we can change the language we made. We still want to discuss that, right?
Yeah.
And does this get into the, there was an area where there's the uses, or I'm sorry, permissible home occupations are. Is that covered in 16-6-140 or?
It was back somewhere else.
It's permissible, I think they have a section that, that doesn't allow some things, like a beauty shop or a barber shop or a car repair or something like that.
Right, yeah. Subsection nine.
Well, there's more, there's more in that list than you think, and there's a lot of it going on in town, and I just, if it's not in here, I think it should be discussed because there are ones in there that seem, eh, give me a break. Why are we not permissible, you know? I get the beauty shop and, you know, I mean, I get some of them, but.
Do you want to go through the list?
What section was that again?
Subsection nine, 16-6-140.
So that's in, which is not on our list. Could we get that in here just to review that list of permissible? Could we put that in our list of possible future consideration?
Oh, no, we made the list already, man.
I know.
Yeah, we'll add that in.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's worth discussing this in the context of what is prohibited and what isn't.
Right, yeah.
Okay, article seven, Res zoning and zoning amendments. The language responding to the specific timeframe, 45 to 75 days, when a request must be reviewed was deleted. This allows greater flexibility for the town requests either sooner or later. I don't necessarily even feel like I have to discuss that, but.
Yeah, that's an example of one of those things I think they pulled off of this entirely, yeah.
I know a couple of people who are not happy about it, so I don't know whether it can be pulled. I mean, it's a substantive change, so.
Well, what.
There are people who don't like development in general in town, and by extending it from 45 to 75 means that that's 30 more days they have to wait, or, you know, 30 more days that the developer has to fiddle around. I mean, I know it's designed to.
Flexibility.
I'm okay with it personally, I just know there are some who are not, so.
I'm sure.
It's worth, we can have a list.
Well, just to, just for clarification, the 45 to 75, it wasn't changed from 45 to 75, it was deleted entirely, is that?
It was deleted to allow the town flexibility, right?
Yeah.
But what does this mean when it says this allows greater flexibility? Got that for the town to review requests either sooner or later?
It had to occur within a timeframe of 45 to 75 days, right? And you might only have one, one town board meeting or something.
It was deleted altogether, that's right, yeah. Which is significant, yeah.
Right. The issue is, is that applications need to be complete, quote unquote, before they're brought to hearing. And that means they've got to, you know, go back and forth with the staff and get to a point where the staff's terms of that is complete, and then we can target a public hearing. And that takes a while. I mean, it depends on the developer, it's variable. That's why if you get jammed into a timeframe, it, it creates, it has the potential to create a lot of confusion because you're jammed into the timeframe. So it's not a question of trying to tie up the public, and it's not a question of trying to tie up the developers, it's a question of having this process come together efficiently so when you put something out to a public hearing, it's in a coherent form, not only the public can understand it and deal with it, but.
Right, so theoretically, you may be jamming the applicant into provide, going forth with public hearing before they are able to really provide all the information the staff has requested.
And it also allows for as much procrastination as they want. I mean, it does both, so.
Well, it's a good, it's a, yeah, I suppose it's a good reason to discuss whether there should be a back-end time limit or something, maybe, I don't know, but.
Well, the practical effect is if developers jam into a timeframe, what you end up with is sometimes you get the same stuff back almost that you had when you sent it back to them. They really don't have the time to deal with, so they throw it back in your lap, and then you got to throw it up to public hearing. Now we got 50 conditions to deal with.
Well, I don't need to discuss it. I just think it needs to stay on the list for the public to see.
Agreed.
If it indicated that it's something that might come off. All I was saying is, no, I'd like, I'd like to see it on, because I.
Leave it for discussion.
But I don't think it requires discussion, I'm okay with it.
Article eight subdivisions, revised code 16-8-20, the time C2, the timeframe, 15 days in the current code to review. Exemption applications were removed to allow greater flexibility. Same kind of issue, right?
Mm-hmm.
Staff recommends 30 days from receiving or completing application.
Are there any provisions for when it constitutes progress in this? Maybe that's what we're really asking there. Progress to execute the.
Well, yeah, we could define, I guess you could try to define that.
Yeah, I don't know.
We've never done that.
Is that what we're really asking, Bob?
What's that?
How we define progress?
You mean going back to the, yeah, I think that's part of it. Isn't there some point at which they have to go back and start over or something if they haven't met certain deadlines?
Yeah, it puts, like, they have 18 months from, like, preliminary development plan to file their final development plan, and, yeah, I mean, there's.
But that's not what we're talking about.
No, no, but I'm, there's.
Benchmark, but there are benchmarks which people establish.
I think adding the, well, anyways, we can.
I don't know.
We can leave it on for further discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Is that still 7-1?
Is that still what?
You're still on eight.
That's 8-1.
8-1.
Item two revised. So we're leaving that in, right?
Right.
For discussion, right? Item two revised code, language regarding approval for minor and major subdivisions. Final plans has been revised, review and comment by the planning commission approved by the town board. I mean, that's addressed to in article two, right?
Right.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't know if we, do we need to discuss it again in article eight? Article eight, if we've really already gone through it in article two?
Well, whatever, we decided article two would have to get amended here.
Yeah.
Right, right, we need to make.
But maybe you make a note in here that.
Make sure they stay consistent.
Pending approval, or approval or disapproval, or whatever discussion occurred in article two would decide whether or not we're really going to discuss in article eight, right?
Yeah.
So, you okay with that? Submental requirements were added for, this is item three, submental requirements were added for minor subdivision applications. That's fine. You guys can have any kind of submental requirements you want. Have them bring you a pizza if you want.
Okay, yeah.
Have them bring a pizza for themselves that they can share. Article 10.
Bobby's waiting to happen.
Right. Plan developments. Revised code 16-10-30C lists the approval procedures for a P.D. These have been clarified. I was, I thought, when I recall reviewing them, I mean, I think, I thought it was, it seemed to make sense, but now I don't remember them exactly. There was a reason why we pulled it, though, and now I don't know what that was, so I assume we still want to review those.
Yeah.
Right?
I'd say so.
The procedures for a P.D. And item two revised code, I'm sorry?
It sounds like language has been added. When it says these have been clarified, that implies there's probably some new language in there.
Revised code sixteen dash ten dash fifty, this section has been revised to eliminate unnecessary language and references to thresholds to trigger a formal review. We definitely want to review that.
Yeah.
Article eleven, site development plans and building permits. Supplemental procedures for an S T P can be found in sixteen dash three of the current code, sixteen dash five oh three of the current code. Language has been referencing the thresholds listed in section sixteen dash two dash ninety.
It goes back to the number two above.
Yeah, article two?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same thing, right?
That article ten, number two, and that goes, all of them go back to sixteen two ninety.
Okay. Think we want to review that, right?
Yeah.
Article thirteen dedications and public improvements, major public improvements referenced review and comment by the planning commission. Same thing, I guess, make the same note, right? In relation to that, as we talked about in.
Yep. Article two type of stuff.
Item one, article one.
Which one? Article what? Article one, yeah, thank you. Depending on what we discuss in article one would determine whether we need to discuss in article thirteen. I guess the question, do we need to have it both places?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, this is where your discussion should take place, not around the definitions.
Right, yeah, true.
Discuss it here and then change the definition when we go back.
Put it back in the definitions.
Yeah, this is the process piece.
Article seventeen, streets and sidewalks, in particular sections sixteen seventeen dash twenty B three and sixteen seventeen dash eighty revised code and others in this article that are quantitative and reference directly to town superior roadway design. We were. The issue here was, well, the issue here was, we were saying, what?
What?
We want the code to reference the, that document as opposed to defining it in one place and having it defined in another place.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And we're gonna do that, right?
Well, what I, you know, what I, we did not do initially, but what I have done now is when the attorneys made our, our new code, they did some shit sifting and winnowing. They did, they took a few things out, but not a lot. They transposed the language from the current code into this new one. The problem is now there's, there's, the major references, the town of superior roadway design and what are the criteria and standards? And what we decided to do was if there is an overlap that's left in this new version that is identical to what's in the roadway design standards, we should get it out of the land use code.
Right, it should only reference, reference that document.
I've, I've got a list now of stuff that can be actually moved from here because it's identical over in the land use code with about two or three exceptions. There's some, there are a couple of conflicts that we need to resolve as well. And then, so what we can do is just, if you, we can take out of here the stuff that's duplicative in the roadway design standards. And that'll cut this thing probably in about half, okay? And then we'll leave in what is in the zoning or zoning or in the regs now, which are relative to streets and roads that are policy statements and so on. There's several of those. We can leave that, you know, in this version.
Engineering of the, of the roadway design.
Right.
Is a, is a living document anyway, right?
It was approved by ordinance, right, it's approved by ordinance and it's a policy of the town, so.
Right, so then when the town engineer makes a decision to change some technical piece of the roadway design, it doesn't have to go back through the land, a land use code approval process, right?
No.
Wasn't that the intent?
Yeah.
Right, it's, that becomes its own.
It is, it's an ordinance.
And we're just referencing, you have to meet the current standard.
Right.
Right?
And, but there is some other, there, like I say, there's about, I noticed a couple of, three conflicts that we would have to discuss and iron out. They're small, but the rest of it, I mean, a lot of it is duplicative. I mean, you find the exact language actually in the design standards, which was not unusual because when the engineers wrote that document, they looked at the zoning or the, our land use code at the same time.
Right.
So.
John, are you asking if we can get those few changes that are, or conflicts that are in the land use code rather than keep them in land use code, get them into the design document?
I think they should, if there's, if there is, yeah, technical requirements that appear in the land use code, that, we should take them out of the land use code.
Even if they don't appear in the design now.
If they're policy issues, then they, they should stay in the land use code, but if they are.
Well, the question is, is.
But if they're technical requirements or whatever, they should stay in, they should only be in the.
Right.
In, in the roadway.
Roadway design.
Design requirements, and then all we're doing is referencing and saying, in the land use code, if you're doing, building roads, you have to meet the current standard.
Right, would that require a change in the ordinance?
I'm saying like do a minimum.
It would require a change, there's a couple of spots that if you agree.
At least the minimum.
That where the standards are wrong, you know, that this is what we want, it's a policy. They've got a statement about it, but it's the wrong number, then that standard should be changed. That's what we're saying, should be changed in the roadway standards. And we. And they don't have to be left in here, but they have to be changed over there.
Right.
So, yeah, we could do that.
And we ran across this too, under the roadway design and one other.
Well, drainage, same one.
Drainage, right, was it drainage, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So do we need to discuss this, or is it clear what we've asked?
Well, what we need to do, what, what I, you know, when, first of all, get some resolution on if there's language in our revised code here that is the same as over in the roadway standards, just take it out.
Yep.
Okay, we can do that.
And we'll show that as black line.
Right, and then.
Yeah, right.
Where there's a, where there's a number, like the width of a bike path, that's different in here versus what's over in, we can, we can, I guess, recommend that that be changed in the roadway or sidewalk standards in the roadway.
Yeah, that's one of those things, I would say, I wouldn't necessarily put in the land use code. What the requirement for the width, for the width of a, of a bike path is, it shows up in the roadway design.
It should be.
If you're going to build a bike path.
The thing is that we.
The current standard in the roadway.
Right, the only issue is, is that it's different here because there is a, like, for instance, a bike lane on a road, it's five feet in the roadway standards, but it's eight feet in here. The reason it's eight feet in here is because it's felt that it should be on a roadway wider than five feet. Five is feet isn't a lot of space on a, on a roadway to have a bike lane. So that's why it was changed in here.
From a policy standpoint, though, maybe we should review, at some point, we should review the roadway design things for those kinds of decisions. I, I don't know if that's even the purview of the planning commission.
God, it is, I mean, I think by my way with this.
But the point about having conflicts between the two is what we're trying to avoid, right?
Right.
And just make the standard in one place.
Right.
And the land use code just says, meet the current standard that's in the roadway design.
So if you had the minimum five, minimum standard of five, that.
Well, the land use code says eight, which is, which is the.
But it exceeds the minimum.
So could I recommend that we leave this to be discussed with notes that say we have questions for staff? Because there was one or two you were still getting an answer for.
Yes, 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 we can.
Ensure that it's done, because they know what we're talking about. And just leave it as a point of clarification on our next.
Right, and there's only about three of them that are like that.
And as follow-up to this, should we also be reviewing the roadway design issue? Thanks, for those, for those things that.
What's up with you?
Things change.
Have changed or whatever, that we should, that are, that are the purview of the planning commission.
Yeah, yeah.
Tackle this sucker and then.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, get through this, but somewhere down the road. And the same, I don't know if the drainage issue, that's anything we need to do or not, but.
Sure.
That'd be all.
Yeah, so anyway, the point, I guess, to Bob's point, we want to leave it on to discuss. Right, okay. Long story short. And then revised code change from twelve thousand V P D to eighteen thousand V P D to be consistent with the same thing, right? All these issues are the same.
All these issues, there's, in here, yeah, I mean, the first one, we go with the roadway standards. All right? Second one, it's, in other words, it's over in the roadway standards. There's one in here where there's, I think there's an eight foot to ten foot. That's one of those deals we have to highlight as a discussion point. So that's number four.
But even, even a, a bike, a bike path require, a design decision could be changed in a P D anyway.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, but these are like minimum standards, so that's where we start from.
Right, I understand.
Right, this is the problem here, like this one where it talks about bicycles and pedestrians, there's no standard in the roadway standards for that kind of a bike path. That's why it's over here in the code, one of the reasons.
But should it be in, in the roadway?
It should be, yeah, it really should. They just don't have a, they don't have it there, it's just not there. So that's, you know, so that's something we would suggest needs to be over there in the roadway.
It's gotta be somewhere, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The lab, the fifth one talks, that's dealing with gated developments. There's nothing in the roadway standards about that, so that's definitely a zoning policy deal. And now we've made it discretionary, so that one you can either think it's okay or.
Yeah, I recall us deciding we ought to pull that and discuss.
Remember that one?
Mm-hmm.
This is another one, the six, number six, it's the same thing where the language isn't clear in what is meant. Is what's this sort of set, this sort of, you know, rewording it, but actually there's a better way to do it than that. I mean, what we've got is a four foot trail, that's a, that's what the parks want. They want a four foot, like crusher fines trail, then they want it maintained three feet on each side. And that's, they need to make that very specific. It either needs to be no vegetation or else it's mowed to the maximum height of three inches or something, so it keeps the vegetation from approaching onto the trail. That's what that's all about. That should be over in roadway design standards when it talks about these different types of sidewalks and trails and stuff.
Agreed.
But that becomes a maintenance thing too, right? I mean, you design it in, but in.
Parks department, which is what they want to do now, that's what they want now. Or if it's not maintained by them, it's an H O A issue.
Well, see, we, we'd love doing the land use code review so much that we want to continue this through the roadway design. Right, so.
Right.
And the urban drainage.
Right.
We can write those up and, and they're suggested that they go into the roadway design standards. That would be planning commission suggestions you can talk about.
Okay, article eighteen, utilities review. The article to see if proper technical requirements for utilities are in chapter eleven of these book of, same issue? Do we have a standard for the utility designs?
Uh, yeah, district, there's.
That's, we're talking about storm and drainage, but is there also for water, water and sanitary service?
Right, there's the superior metropolitan district number one, rules and regulations.
Right, so we want to reference those, right?
And the public works directors reviewed the language in, that's in this article. And he felt that, that it was fine, there was no conflict, conflicts between this and what's in the rules and regulations. So I don't know if you want us to.
I guess.
It's part of Jim.
I think it's part of your staff report when we come to the public hearing.
Right.
And we're talking about these, these issues, there could be some statement in there from, from the staff review standpoint about language that should be added or deleted from, from this revision, right?
Okay.
I don't know if any of us have a lot, enough technical experience to decide, to make decisions on the utility engineering. So requirements, we're sort of counting on staff for that, I think, right?
And what you see in this article, there's not a lot of technical language in this article because it's all in the district one.
Generally, they're pretty general.
Right.
I mean, that's my personal experience.
But.
For particular profiles.
When we get to that point, at the public hearing, we'll add some language description for this article.
Okay, article fourteen, signs, number one revised code, the suggested changes should be removed. A billboard is not a monument sign, billboards are prohibited. I don't have any discussion about that, but if you guys feel like that's something to discuss.
What are billboards, are billboards on the R T D benches?
No.
That's not considered a billboard?
It's defined by size, right?
Standalone sign.
Standalone pole signs, pole signs.
Basic criteria is off-site. It's a standalone sign off-site. And your normal perception of a billboard is up on a.
We don't, we don't have any existing billboards.
Right, pole signs.
I'm not around.
But it's a, it's, it's not on-site. It's advertising something that is not on the site that the sign sits on.
Right.
So an R T D, okay, and so a bench is considered on-site, R T D is a.
What do you mean, a bench in the public right-of-way?
I don't know that we have them, but I've seen them elsewhere where they have advertising for.
Yeah, the bench out or whatever.
Yeah, we don't, at this point.
I don't know that we allow it anywhere.
I don't think we have a regulation for bench advertising, and that's something different.
Okay.
That gets to be an issue we probably have to write up on regulation.
What do you guys do with like construction signs?
They're allowed if it's current construction on-site.
It's on-site, yeah.
And it can say, have specific language as far as. We cover that.
I could see where that could be considered a billboard, that's how I was asked.
Well, we have a size limitation for that, yeah.
Four by eight.
And it's got to be on-site.
Well, it's, it's on-site, though, but it, to this point about a billboard being off-site.
Yeah.
A construction site signage that.
Addresses what's on-site.
Project is, is on-site.
Right.
So it's.
I could just see some people getting confused.
Billboard's on somebody's site.
It's not usually a very pretty sign. It's your, normally just a sign with the names on it, and then it stays there for the time of construction, then it goes away.
The only reason I, I say this because I've seen owners that built projects that wanted their logos and their.
Oh, yeah.
It borders on almost advertising.
What's that?
You know, a temporary construction site can almost border on being an advertising.
Well, they're absolutely advertising.
I mean, besides the project.
The project or the architect.
Right, you're promoting the client.
Of course. We all understand it, I think.
But I could tell you, about a hundred people have asked me what the heck was being built next wall, next to the daycare center, the Primrose Academy or whatever. And there was a lot of talk that it was a little Jack in the Box, but it's a firestone.
The Jack in the Box is next to it.
Right.
Is it?
That is.
But the, the Jack in the Box sign was up first, and then next thing you know, this construction happened, everybody thought that was the Jack in the Box. Like, man, that's a big Jack in the Box. All those bays, right?
Drive in and you, and then you back out.
Right, so there's a benefit to having the sign.
Change your tires in the meantime.
Sorry, we digress.
No, I'm sorry.
Did you tell them that's in Brumfield?
It is in Brumfield, yeah.
It's not your worry.
Right.
Item two, permanent signs in the public right-of-way unless allowed by a license agreement of town and conforming to the standards of this article.
Is that an attorney?
Yeah, so we have this monument sign down here for Superior Plaza that's in the public right-of-way. And then we have one, I think in the marketplace, though, about one of them. Right of way.
Well, the one in the middle of the median is in the right-of-way.
Right, yeah, that's.
Honestly, I don't know, it was thirty-six, but I'm not sure about that.
Is Awida?
Yeah, it's got a license agreement.
And it has a license agreement.
The Discovery Park one, or whatever.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes, Discovery.
So is this to prevent permanent signs in the public right-of-way unless?
Well, man, you could address that. Yes, I mean.
Because that's not what these words say here.
Well, it just says, I think it's, it may be under the, fourteen maybe under the list of prohibited items.
Is this under a list of prohibited?
Yes. Oh, wait, no, prohibited, uh, yeah, it is, actually, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's under the list of prohibited.
What is prohibited is permanent signs in the public right-of-way unless allowed by.
License agreement, right. Article twenty-one landscaping article, the parks and rec department should be added here since they have a list of prohibited plants. And the listing to be verified that they are the same, you know, there was a, you guys were going to research that or do something, right?
Right.
It was related to state, state list of prohibited plants or something. There was some reference thing you were going to reference.
Usually they hire a landscape architect to.
And so again, is this back to having another document that we're trying to.
We were trying to reference some, some consistent document that said, well, the list of prohibited plants. Rather than keeping our own list.
Right.
That we have no expertise over.
I remember bringing this up because the real estate public, or the seller's property disclosure form the Real Estate Commission puts together has a list of prohibited plants.
That was it, yeah.
And that just jogged in my mind that, well, they must be referencing some list somewhere, so why shouldn't we just reference some list? And not have a list of plants, because that could change.
But it's gotta be a list under our control.
No, not necessarily. It's just a list of somebody's control, somebody's with some expertise is putting.
Problem with that is if we want something on it.
Marijuana.
Because we want a prohibited, right? Well, everybody's guess they want here.
No, I'm not, I'm not, no, I just, whole move.
But yes, for example. I mean, that list was, we want that list under our control so that we can make changes to it if we desire, I would think, but.
Well, I think the discussion was, we didn't have the expertise as to what should be on that list because that list does change from time to time.
So the question was, does.
Reference some state list, some C S U list or something.
Or the question was, does the parks or just someone else in town have a list?
Yeah, right.
Or do we reference that list and our own, but, I mean, somewhere we need to be able to.
It's in the supplemental. Well, we have our own.
Have control of it.
Yeah, well, thanks.
It's in the supplemental regulations. So, yeah.
True.
I mean, the idea, I think, what Clint was getting back is, and I thought where we ended up with is the parks department was supposed to research this, these different lists. And then we have, this is the list. It's the town's list, and it may include, you know, other lists, but it's the town's list, and that's what they conform. And that has, I don't think that's been done.
I mean, our list could reference the state list and some other lists in our stuff.
Right.
Whatever's appropriate.
That hasn't been done.
Do we want that done to move forward, or do we leave this as is, or canopy down?
Because our, our list is.
Because our, our list is supplemental, it's like the similar requirements, it's supplemental to the recs and that's the way it's referenced in the, in the code.
I think, I think we were looking, we were looking to staff to say, where should we develop, how should we develop the list of prohibited plants?
Where does it come from and what kind of list does it come?
If the Parks and Rec Department already has one, should we reference that? Should we reference this list that comes from the real estate, Colorado real estate disclosures, I mean, whatever it is. I don't, I don't know what the right thing is, but.
We'll, yeah, Fred's right, we'll get that information.
But the list shouldn't exist in the land use code verse.
No.
Right, so. Does that make sense?
Research.
Item two, language from the current code that addressed landscaping between two dissimilar uses was consolidated and clarified in this subsection. In addition, buffer widths from the original design policies document were added since they were incorrectly inserted by the codifier.
That's my, because I went through that whole thing.
Do we need to discuss them? No, I don't think so. We like that one, Fred, we trust you. Article twenty-two fences, hedges and walls. Revised code of fences in residential zones that references to discouraging chain link and barbed wire fences was removed since chain link is allowed and barbed wire fences prohibited. I don't think we need to discuss that, do we? Is there a barbed wire lobby in town on the shit where?
Could be a chain link one if you.
There would be, I agree with that, I'm sure of that.
I don't think there's any barbed wire floating around.
Not, not even well-maintained barbed wire, huh?
Well, what about around Oster and somewhere?
Yeah, some of those where there is cattle, there's going to be barbed wire.
But that's.
But that's not residential.
It's not residential.
That's right.
Just that, this.
This is only in residential zones. You've got some razor work.
There's something else going on there if they have.
Yeah, we'll get the notification, good stuff happening in some neighborhood. There's razor work.
Item, item two, fences in business community, et cetera. Staff felt that both chain link and barbed wire should be prohibited in these zones. These sections can be researched and possibly linked together. Section sixteen twenty-two dash twenty covers the issues regarding barbed wire fences, so barbed wire can be deleted and replaced with the word areas with where. I think we're fine with no barbed wire in business community zones, right?
Are we prohibiting chain link?
Yeah, it sounds like we're even relating that too.
In B C.
Yeah, the B C that we have here, we don't have a problem. Around original town, we sell the B C properties.
Well, we have the one on the corner, but.
He has not chain link around it, does he?
Yeah, but it's already there.
It's grandfathered.
So it'd be grandfathered, okay.
How about Guardian, weren't they putting some?
No, they're putting the iron, iron picket fence.
Yeah, but on the temporary areas is what I remember.
Yeah, they got. In between the building.
They're going to put slats or something, you know, like the slat stuff.
This is around the lot.
Where are the temporary?
Not around the property line, they have to secure the whole property.
Okay, alright.
But they said on the west side, the building, the building was going to be, the building was going to be the wall, the fence, but.
That's not getting.
That's phase two. And the, and one of them said, oh yeah, good point, we got to do something temporary there. But, but that wasn't defined, well, it wasn't defined, yeah, wasn't defined.
That's kind of what I thought I was hearing.
Well, they're going to have to secure that site somehow, right?
Well, right.
In reality.
But that's a plan.
But that's a plan, yeah.
So.
The purpose is.
They're going to do it.
Nobody's going to see that anyways, backing up to open space, maybe a little bit of psych more, but.
Yeah. Just a couple, I mean, if a couple houses, if they happen to be working out that way, yeah, they might, they see whatever that is.
Yeah, they're going to have more, they're going to have to build a good fence for their own security.
Yes, they are.
Worrying about.
It's just in between the phase one and phase two that they don't have that building wall to be their fence.
Has to be put in, now that landscaping has to be put in.
Right.
Prior to them.
Not on the west.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, all of it, all of it.
They have to get some significant phasing issues there that they're going to have to figure out.
That's what, that's what I thought.
They should go ahead and put those foundations in or something.
Just fill out the walls anyway.
Okay, moving on. We're okay with that, right? We don't need to discuss that, do we?
No.
Article twenty-four parking and loading, the second sentence was added by staff to reflect current parking lot design policy. I don't remember what the second sentence is, but I think we'll trust you on that one, Fred. When it comes to parking.
I remember.
It's nice and long, you want me to, you want me to read it?
Or at least the gist of it?
Yeah, I remember, yeah, this is your fault.
Yep. Parking lots with more than eight spaces in a row and a maximum of sixteen spaces in the lot shall have two points of access or a hammerhead spaced facilitate exit circulation of vehicles. Parking lots with more than sixteen spaces shall have two points of access or a looped drive system to a common access to facilitate vehicle circulation.
So Clint knows his parking lots.
So the second, so that second sentence you were saying was a new one.
Mm-hmm.
Sixteen.
I guess my concern was it's just, it's making things more restrictive when perhaps there's some scenario where you could make circulation work without the hammerhead or without something. And I just think you should be able to look at things on a case by case basis without driving it by, by putting in the code. That was my concern with adding it. I just, I thought the code was fine as it was.
Totally, that would be discussed.
Yeah, sure.
I think we should discuss it.
No, I don't, I don't, no, I don't need, I don't necessarily need to have it discussed further if.
No, but I mean, it's, it's a viable suggestion because there might be alternative ways of doing it.
Are there, I mean, are there cases, I mean, you all wanted to put it in there for some reason, are there, are there cases compelling reasons that it should be put in there?
Well, you get too many spaces, you got to have a way for them, otherwise people are backing around in the, in the parking lot. That, that's what we're trying to avoid. They got to be able to gack back out and. If they're backing, sometimes they can't, they have to back way down the aisle in order to get out because they can't turn around, there's no hammerhead to turn around.
Right.
Yeah, you don't want somebody having to back up a distance to.
Wouldn't we?
Or you can loop it.
Wouldn't you have the opportunity to see that though in a, in some plan and you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At PD, but which is mostly what we're going to deal with.
Well, even with, let's say we had a, a site plan for a, a business. And their parking was set up so all of a sudden people are backing around down to the parking lot, that doesn't work.
It's maybe better left in the way the staff is talking about so that if the developer could come up with a solution that's different, they can apply for variance or something. Well, you know, as opposed, this way when they see the guideline, they know, oh, I've got to put a hammerhead.
Okay.
Because I know what he's talking about, I've been in those parking lots and I turn around and you got to back all the way down.
Yeah, that's not a good situation.
Okay.
Because it does all talk about looping, it talks about a hammerhead space, it talks about certain ways which they, allows people to get out in a more efficient manner, it's not just. You don't, it's not just mandating two access points, it's mandating these type of design issues so that people aren't really doing this backing business that John's talking about.
Okay, I'm good with that, I'm good with that, we can pull this. Not worry about it.
Do you want to just take it out completely?
Let's do it.
Okay. Okay. Article thirty-two. Oh, we went from twenty-four to thirty-two, we skipped that.
Yeah.
Telecommunication facilities, this article is expanded significantly from the current code, most of the elements of the current code are contained in this section in one form or another. Section sixteen six sixty-two, seven, eight and nine of the current code were omitted as being necessarily following our staff comments regarding the context of this rewritten article. Item one revised code approval required, need to add planned development zone districts to special use permanent segments.
I don't recall. Thought we had some questions about lighting. At one point.
Yeah, I think we had a couple.
Well, item one really related to if somebody was going to lease space from a rooftop or something, is that?
What are we, where are you at?
Item one. Article thirty-two, item one.
What I mean, this first one?
Yeah.
Well, the, it talks about different districts where you have to have a special use and planned development districts aren't listed.
Oh, yeah. We don't need to discuss that.
No.
I don't think, we should definitely be added, right? Item two, add the word mounted after tower. Town encourages co-location therefore there should be no confusion between the square foot limit for each facility on the tower versus all of the facilities on the tower itself. Agreed? Right?
Okay.
Illuminations, security illumination is allowed to, to be a maximum of twenty feet in height, but a support facility in sixteen sixteen thirty-two dash twenty can only be a maximum of fifteen feet. Staff recommends reducing this to fifteen feet.
The idea there is to get the security light on the building or on the equip.
Down lower.
Yeah, or in, you know, some of these real small facilities where they have the smaller equipment, they would probably have a pole there, but why should that be twenty feet for? If you're, if you're going to put it mostly on the building, usually it's by the door where the guy would go in and service it at night anyway. Why would you have, allow it higher at twenty feet? I don't, I didn't understand. This section was rewritten by the attorneys because they have, my assumption is they have a set of telecommunication facility regulations that they've used in the past. And so, and that's fine, it's just that this one didn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we should discuss all, all of these probably.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're putting it in as maximum, you know, not minimum. So clearly if, if it makes more sense on a particular facility to have it at fifteen feet, there's nothing that says you can't have it at fifteen feet. If for some other reason it makes sense that it's got to go up to twenty feet for some reason, then that maximum would allow the twenty. I mean, it's, it's presented as a maximum, not a minimum, so.
Well, this, this is all language that's been added from, that wasn't in the current code, is that essentially correct?
No, it says up here, I mean, it's been bulked up quite a bit, it's been changed and.
I think we want to review that anyway, right?
Yeah, I think so, because, you know, first foot candles and lighting requirements.
All of thirty-two.
I, yeah.
Article thirty-four, especially related businesses, although similar to section sixteen eight sixty-three of the current code, the only district in which such businesses are allowed is now in high industrial, IH district. In addition, a distance restriction has been added for those locations for these businesses in relation to the uses listed. Again, that's the same reason we want to.
Is it by special use or do we have to allow that, right, in the zoning, by law?
Uh, no, I think you can codify it any way you want.
But, no, currently in, in IH, it's by special use?
Well, we don't have IH.
Oh, we don't have IH, do we?
We have an IH.
We have an IH.
Yeah.
We have a definition when you're reading things, so.
Okay.
We just don't have.
Yeah.
I mean, could we just make that, both of those, could we make it special use there as well?
Yes, it's special.
Okay.
That's so funny.
In IH?
Yep.
But either way, are we, we're going to talk about that or maybe this in relation to that, that same kind of general note that if.
Sure.
Whatever we decide in, is it article six?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, article six, number four, you know, you can make the same, same thing if, depending on how, what we talked about discussing article six, we may render this sort of moot, right? Although it looks like we get into a little more specifics in, in article thirty-four about distance and.
Right.
Especially displays and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Either way.
Oh, yeah.
Should we get to five and we got through thirty-five?
No, how about that? Get it out.
You know that, that drive thing you were talking about, Clint, I was just thinking for a minute.
We're back again?
No, I know. Like the Chase Bank over in Lewisville, because a one-way drive has more than sixteen spaces. It loops the building because it has a bottle, you know, bottleneck nose, it has one-point egress.
But you can.
And one-point access.
But you can loop around.
Right. So that's what he was talking about, what we're thinking about.
Well, it works.
As opposed to two with a, two points.
Forcing them to do it a certain way.
Right?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, it's not so much about the egress as it is about the design of the lot and the ability to go in either direction.
But they use like a.
Some of their spaces.
These are more like a one-way.
Yeah, or a one-way, yeah. One-way loop.
Okay, that concludes item two.
Do we want to, I mean, do we want to talk about the public hearing, do we get this far enough along?
Well, I would suggest we do that at the next meeting because at the next meeting I was hoping that we could have the attorney here go through her list of responses.
Okay.
And then we can talk about process for the public hearing.
Okay.
What, you know, that format we're thinking.
Okay.
If that sounds all right.
Yep. There's no item through, well, item three, but not staff announcements or miscellaneous, was there anything else?
Uh, let's see, just upcoming for the next board meeting, we have the Guardian Storage File Development Plan. That's on the consent agenda, so we'll see what occurs there.
So that would be on February twentieth?
Twenty-second, yep.
Twenty-second.
And then Clearwire Wireless has proposed installing a wireless pole, antenna pole in community park, which will become to the planning commission and the town board. There's a lease agreement associated with that. So.
Is it one of those disguised pine tree ones or anything?
It's a, it kind of looks like a light pole, but it's got no lights on the top, basically. And it's, last location I saw was between, somewhere between the two outfield fences where they come together there in the middle, if that makes sense. You got to walk way down.
Between the fields.
Between the two fields.
Is this the surface superior for wireless?
No, it's for their wireless customers, yeah. Although Clearwire, I just saw something to where they.
Is that cellular or is it Wi-Fi?
Cellular, yeah. They, they are installing WiMAX.
Oh, really?
In communities, so we might have discussion with them about that too, because right now they're giving us lease concessions to put the pole on in community park.
Can you get a WiMAX franchise basically or whatever they, whatever they call it?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't talked to them at all about it, but I just saw that they were doing that in another community, so.
Mm, mhm.
We got to have that discussion.
You got to ask.
Wow, wow.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, so, either way, that'll be coming forward.
Just don't put one of those sirens on that tower, man. Jesus, they were stood, stood next to one of those when it went off.
We live two doors from them.
Holy, holy moly.
A siren.
Have you heard the sirens?
No, I have not.
I was down in Grand Park one day when they were testing them. Man, when nothing comes around, you can't even see.
Yeah, you can't, you can't hear yourself talk.
I grew up in tornado alley, so we had sirens all the time.
Free doors, you have a few doors down.
That should start in April, shouldn't it?
Yeah, it'll start back up again with testing.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, Phil, sorry for a couple neighbors here. Four on the middle of twenty yards.
So Guardian Storage, what else, is there anything else on the lookout?
Clearwire and, and then the fire department got pushed back to March eighth. And that'll be a public hearing for the final flat site plan. And.
No luck reaching Conica Phillips?
No, I'm still working, they, they have been busy, they've, you know, had their meeting in front of the planning commission with the city of Lewisville, so. No, uh-uh. I'm still working. They have been busy. They've, you know, had their meeting in front of the planning commission with the city of Lewisville, so, but, yeah.
Yeah, they don't care about us.
Well, we could say that, but we're not a big priority.
So we purchased the land for.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We purchased the land for the ice skating rink, is that correct?
Yeah.
Either way, we can get a.
What's it going to be?
Lot, oh, the, the boundaries, the lot, the plat, whatever.
Yeah, actually, that, I'm glad you brought that up. We're going to be doing a minor subdivision for that, which will have to come to the planning commission and the town board. So we're working on getting that document put together, that final plat, so that we can bring that forward, and it'll have all that information on there.
So roughly, is it just sort of straight in?
Yeah.
But they're not doing a site design, right? They're just doing a plat?
Yeah, it's just a plat, and then they're going to have to do.
A site plan.
A site plan, a site development plan when they are ready, but, yeah, it's basically just ten acres east from there, you know, includes the current site and then goes east.
Oh, okay, okay.
I might, let me, I might have some preliminary, something preliminary we did for the purchase agreement that I can send you.
Okay.
In the meantime.
Isn't the purchase agreement supposed to be done over twenty-fourth? I don't think it's yet purchased yet.
Yeah, no, at the last meeting.
The board approved it, but the final documentation hasn't been. And I, that's what I thought was happening.
Yeah.
I thought the transaction with Mid-Kay won't be done until twenty-fourth.
Oh, the closing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's probably right.
Okay.
But the board is.
So it hasn't.
But the board has approved it.
Has approved it, just hasn't put it in.
Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned.